With liberty and justice for all.
Next up is approval of minutes, city council meeting June 16th, 2011. Do I have a motion?
I have a motion.
Second, comments, questions, corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Next up, communications and petitions, citizens to be heard. I have one citizen requesting to be heard, Mr. Bill Adler. Could you go to the podium, please? Address is 188. Here you go, Shirley.
Hi, my name is Bill Adler, live at 188 North Central. It was last city council meeting, I was under request of possibly getting a quiet zone put through City Wooddale, and gave out some information, and I know some of the workers been, they've been working on some of it, which is great. I have a few other ideas. Through the FRA protocol, as of 2010, the trains have to comply with the decibel level, and I can guarantee you, just from my own experience, that it's way over 110. I used to work with a skill saw all day, so, skill saws run at 100 decibels. So, anyway, my, I'd like to volunteer if the city would allow me to use a decibel meter, I would sit there and monitor the trains, and then if you did that, then they would be non-compliant, and then you could maybe levy something against them, or something of that factor. If you'd be willing to do that, I'd be willing to volunteer my time to get it done. So basically, that's the update, what I have, would like to do to help with getting it done, so, thank you for your time.
Mr. Barnes, can you respond to that?
Yeah, I think as the city indicated, there's a, it's a fairly complicated process to do it. It seems like it should be easy, just tell them, "Don't make noise when you're going through this particular area," but unfortunately, it's not. But certainly, the decibel levels, there's some concern in terms of the ability for the city to have effective enforcement against the railroads. They're governed by federal law, and there are certain preemptions. In other words, federal law takes precedent. But I know staff is working, they've worked with some of the professionals that the city has hired to look into that. Unfortunately, I mean, it's very generous of you to volunteer to do that, but in order to have those readings and justify, you'd have to be trained in the calibration of the machine that reads the decibel levels, and you'd have to be certified in order to do that. The city does have some people with the police department who have that expertise for muffler violations and truck violations and so forth, so it's a good suggestion. I'm sure the city manager has taken note of that, to be able to utilize that as part of the arsenal to try and see what can come of that. But there is a movement afoot to try and to have trains comply with lower noise levels and so forth. So there is, industry-wide, there are some attempts that are being made to try and accommodate that, because this is a problem not only in Wooddale, it's a problem throughout the country, frankly. So, you know, you're not alone, but there are efforts that are being made toward that.
Okay, thank you for that. I have one other idea. We already have the cameras in place at Wooddale and Irving for violators and stuff like that. I mean, I don't know what they cost to put in over it on ash to help make a complaint for the, you know, no train noise, but, you know, try anything to get it done, so.
We also have, Mr. Murmas, I'll give you an update of what's been going on.
Since the last time you came to the city council meeting, we have made some significant progress. Actually, spoke with Bensonville about their participation in the quiet zone, also spoke to our lobbyists and our engineering staff, and we are working on getting funding for the eventual implementation of the quiet zone, and Bensonville's also interested. So it will move along. It may not be, you know, rapid pace, but it is moving at a nice pace, and we are trying to get the funding. It is going to be a priority. So eventually, it will get done, it just is going to take some time.
Okay, thanks, I appreciate all your efforts, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizens wish to address the council? Next, community cases. I have none. Mayor's report. Going to make an appointment to the police pension board for a two-year term, Valerie Perrault of the Chamber of Commerce Director and suburban banking trust. And then the next committee, we need the advice and consent of the council, building code of a Board of Appeals, three-year term for Joseph Pleple, four-year term for Tony Neary, five-year term for Dan Gretzel. Do I have a motion for those three appointments?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Do we need a roll call for this? Any discussion on this? Alderman Wesley.
The discussion is only for those three? I'd like to make a statement-
It's only for those three right now.
I'd like to make a statement about the pension.
You can bring that up under new business.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Chalky?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Lazaro?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next is Clean Air Count. Mr. Murmas, take the lead on that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Recently, the Clean Air Counts Committee has been working on a program that they hope the council, the city council, would support, and involves residents getting reimbursed from the city, from the Clean Air Counts Fund, for the installation or the building of a rain barrel. So Clean Air is not the only thing they've been working on, also, you know, conserving water. As part of this program, the committee did actually work on receiving a free rain barrel from DuPage Water Commission. They plan on building a display. In-house Public Works will build the display. We would put it outside City Hall and kind of make a plaque, you know, just exemplifying the importance of conserving water. So this, at this time, they're just asking for some money to build the display, and then in the springtime, that's when they would begin their grant program. The details of the grant program are in the packet. There's also a picture of what the display could look like. Essentially, a resident can bring a receipt in or show a picture of their rain barrel. They would get $50 credit towards that rain barrel, and that's essentially the program. The program funding would, when it runs out, it runs out. There's no more available for that year, so it's on a first-come, first-served basis. So that's essentially the program, if anybody has any questions.
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Murmas. Next item, brush pickup. This past weekend, I was out, I know we had the storm. I spoke to Mr. Kramer already about this. Couple of Aldermen expressed their concerns. Basically, we sent out the reverse 911. About half the city got picked up last week. Totally unacceptable, as far as I'm concerned. We're going to have to come up with some better plan. I know everybody got something in their packets. This might have to be a discussion. We're going to have to address. I'm hearing this might take three weeks, correct, John?
I can take that. Probably three and a half from last Monday, so I would imagine this week, we only had four days. Next week, we'll probably spend the complete week and then perhaps a day or two in the following week, at the way we're going right now, ward by ward. Ward one's complete, ward two is almost complete, so we've got three and four. There's a lot of brush in four and a lot of brush in three. You know, this was probably the most I've seen a, in all, in the three years I've been here with the contracted service. This is probably the largest storm pickup outside of that August '08 that we had, so it was probably the largest amount of brush we've seen.
Mr. Murmas wanted to make a comment.
Yes, if the council can just, you know, bear with staff when we do this. I mean, keep in mind, when we had the brush collection discussion a little over a year ago to terminate our contract, staff did put in the report that the full brush collection for the citywide collection would be about four weeks. So when we sent out this reverse 911, not only is it storm damage, but people are also putting out regular brush collection. So four weeks is a standard time to pick up brush collection for the city. We have one crew, one chipper truck. If the council's interested in getting this done faster, perhaps we could authorize overtime from the start. Keep in mind that we did not authorize overtime from the beginning, because there was a cost-saving measure associated with eliminating the brush collection program. So obviously, the council wanted to save dollars. This would be an added expense. Another option is, we could talk about renewing a brush collection contract in the future. I mean, these are some options we need to discuss, because four weeks is the standard time, standard crew, standard one trip, one chipper.
Alderman Wesley, you want to make a comment?
Yeah. John, could you tell me how much it would cost in overtime and how much time it would be saving to get this all done, to finish up this job quickly?
Numbers, we ran some figures today. We figured that if we could take a week off, basically work all next week, and basically work overtime five days during the week from 3:30 until 8:30, which is about the safest. I'd want the guys working beyond, so you're talking five hours a day, and then possibly Saturday and possibly Sunday on the weekend, we could probably wrap it all up, for the most part, next week, I would think. If we work full days during the day, five hours on the evenings, and then a portion of the weekends, perhaps we can get close to getting it done. Just for the staff to work overtime, no additional chipper, no additional crews, just the overtime dollar value would be about $3,000. If you wanted a second crew, you'd have to pay that overtime amount of $3,000 plus. It's about $1,800 a week for a chipper that size. We have a truck that we can add, but, so you're talking $5,000 for that.
Go ahead, follow up.
I'm going to ask the question about cross-training, or employees are cross-trained. I know the water department is kind of busy, or busy. Do we have, do we have some spare time that we could pull from them and rent the chipper to get this job done?
Mr. Kramer.
During normal work hours or overtime?
During normal work hours.
No.
So you can't spare anyone?
Not during this time of year, not with the water department and the things they're going on. Water department has their own responsibilities during the week for me to have to pull, I have to pull two guys to work together. Basically, two guys are safe with one chipper and one truck, so you'd still have to pay the rental of a chipper, because we only have one. So if you wanted to double up a crew, I'd have to pull two guys, basically, one out of the water department, one out of the wastewater department, and right now, unfortunately, with scheduling and the operations we have going on currently, vacation time, everything else, it is the summer, I would really be hamstringing operations if I was to do that.
You would only, John, you only have to pull one full-timer, can you use a seasonal on that? You do have some seasonals, don't you?
Mr. Kramer.
Correct, we do have seasonals. I really frown upon using seasonals for chipper, just because of the dangerous nature of the equipment, and especially for helping a department that does not use that piece of equipment all the time. I'd be more apt to do that for street department, where I have somebody who's, you know, used a chipper pretty much all summer long for the years he's been working for us. If I was to supplement it, I'd probably do it on the street side more so than I would do it anywhere else, just because of the training factor. Again, all the staff are cross-trained to a degree, but there's some people that are more comfortable than others.
Alderman Chalky, you want to add your hand up?
Yeah, before we outsourced, staff used to pick up one for ward one, the first week of the month, ward two, the second week, so forth, and it worked very well, and we were, as far as I'm concerned, we were conned into outsourcing by, not you, but by the previous Public Works Director, who said it was a wash, which is kind of silly to say, "We're going to add $100,000 to the billing, and it's a wash, there's no such thing." But I don't understand why we can't go back to the old system when there's this type of an event, or when you're going to have brush pickup twice a year. Why not have ward one the first week, ward two the second week? Then these people aren't going to, and ward four aren't going to be putting out their trees on the grass, and it's going to kill the grass by the end of the month, and I had a couple of calls today again about grass, they didn't know what to do with the branches and so forth. We do have restrictions as to what you can put out there, and I guess the one person who called said they did have a note on there saying, "You have to have this arranged by calling the company and paying extra for it." That should be done more often, perhaps. I mean, if it's not from parkway trees, if it's from the back lawn, and they're just tearing a tree down, we shouldn't be having to pick it up. That's personal stuff. So I'd like to see us go back to the ward by ward by ward each month, or at least twice a year, and just have this emergency thing for a storm come up, and then we'll take care of it at that point, but not to tell the people, "Put all your stuff out there this week, because it's going to be picked up," because now they're all, they're all sitting there waiting. Where in the heck are these guys? Killing my grass, and the bushes are still sitting there. Well, bushes weren't part of it. The storm didn't take out bushes, but that's, you know, they got these big, great, big evergreen bushes that are sitting there killing the grass. Just doesn't make any sense unless we have some kind of normal system, and I'd like to see us go back to the ward system, so that it won't happen again, at least.
All right, Mr. Murmas has made a note. We're going to put that on a public works agenda very soon.
Thank you. What are we going to do about this now? I mean, are we going to approve, I mean, we're, the city council is up here to provide a service. I think we should help get this job done and spend the money on overtime, because that's what we do up here. We supply a service, and part of our service is doing our cleanup.
Mr. Murmas, you have, it seems that the council would like this overtime take-
That's fine, if it's a preference of the council, it'll save a couple of days this time, but we need to talk about strategy long-term.
That's, that's fine, but we got to do something now.
No more questions. Alderman Sizmarsky, you were first.
Just like with the other Alderman here, and this is the 21st, and we did not specify anything on- We did not specify anything on the reverse 911, that it would take four weeks to clean all this up, and people are aggravated. So it is our job to take care of this situation as soon as possible, and put something else in policy that we do it faster.
Alderman Kolska.
Well, I thought it was okay to last where, the way it was, but somebody changed it, and I don't think two times a year is enough for a tree city, tree city, to have brush pickup only twice a, twice a year. And now we're starting to talk hiring somebody. They probably have their own people that's been hiring them all year, and they don't have time for the people that only do it part-time. So I, if you want to hire somebody, hire somebody out for the year. Don't hire them just for part-time, because people hate part-time stuff. And I, I realize that we've paid $90,000 a year for that service, but at least the trees got picked up, and we didn't have to worry about them. We didn't have to dispose of them. We didn't have to have any place to put the ground-up trees. You go over on Potter, and they got a stack of stuff there, take your, go over there and take all you want, and, because we don't have no place to put it. And we never saw that when we had the service. So you're talking about getting new help, getting, putting a kid that's 17 or 18 years old next to a machine, they'll chop his arm off in two seconds, if it'll cut up a branch in two, two to three inches in diameter. So I, I don't know what you're talking about. And you, you're talking, you don't want this, then you get into trouble, now you want it. So as far as I'm concerned, you can't make up your mind what you want. There's only one thing to do. Let it go.
Alderman Winger?
Let the people complain.
Sorry, John. Alderman Winger?
Thank you. I guess I'm okay with the overtime, but I would say no to running a chipper. It sounds like we can get it done in a week. Let's just do that.
Is that the consensus? Mr. Murmas, you're good to go.
So we're going to just authorize overtime, no renting of chipper, no contracting out? We'll save a couple of days? Okay?
Thank you. That concludes my report. Next. Did you want to?
Just a couple, just a few brief comments, I guess. First would be the reason, I'm the one that authorized the 911. I'm the one that gave the dialogue for the 911. I didn't want to put a timeframe on it, and Alderman Chalky gave an excellent idea. That was my mistake not to have them put out by wards for the week. I knew it was going to take a period of time. I didn't know it was going to be four weeks. With everything else that was going on, the first couple of days of brush collection didn't go as smooth as I would have liked. We were pulled off several times with that equipment to do hanging branches and things that popped up after the storm, but I will definitely incorporate for future storm damage pickups, the comment by Alderman Chalky, releasing all that information, "We're going to do ward one the first week of the month," or however it falls, however it shakes out, but that would definitely time the location of those brush piles, and hopefully alleviate residents' concern a little bit about how long it's been in their curb appeal. So that's an excellent idea. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kramer. That concludes my report. Manager's report is next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of items. First item, I hope you all noticed the new newsletter format. I hope you liked it. It was a collaborative effort between all the taxing bodies in town. It is a full-color product now, higher quality than before, and I believe it's actually cheaper than before, so I hope everybody likes that at home and on the council. Second item, our first movies in the park are the summers, next Saturday, July 16th, Indiana Jones, Raiders of the Lost Ark. Third item, cities required to hold two different public hearings for NYMEC, that is the electrical rates that we're trying to lower for residents and small businesses. This is part of the process. These will be in August. Shortly thereafter, we can hope to see how much money we will save our residents. So that's coming up in August. Fourth item, our ComEd External Affairs rep is here tonight, Ms. Bonita Parker. She was in constant contact with staff during the storm. She's been doing a great job. I speak highly of her when she's not here, so I'll speak highly of her when she's here. So hopefully, you guys treat her nicely tonight. She's got a brief PowerPoint, and then probably can answer any questions you have.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Jeff, and to the Honorable Mayor Police and members of city council, thank you so much for having me here and giving me this opportunity to not only meet with you and greet with you, but also to share some of the restoration efforts, most notably done with the June 21st storm. Again, I'm Bonita Parker. I serve as your direct gateway into ComEd. Any support that you need, any issues that need to be escalated, given attention to, please do not hesitate to ever call on me, and I'll do my level best to get things resolved. I have with me my wonderful illustrative manager, Art Barcima. He is the Director of External Affairs for the entire northern region. There are approximately six of us, or seven of us, who service the entire northern region, and he manages us day-to-day. So we are going to go through our June 21st storm restoration. Soon thereafter, Jeff, I will certainly send to you a similar report that shows what happened on June 30th. So without further ado, I would like to turn this over to Art Barcima.
Thank you, Bonita, and good evening, everybody, and as Bonita said, thank you very much for this opportunity to address the council, and provide some additional information to you regarding some very significant events that affected the service territory, and I already heard the discussion regarding the impacts upon Wooddale. And so we'd like to give you just a brief overview in terms of the June 21st storm and what took place. As Bonita said, I'm the Director of External Affairs for ComEd's northern region. During the storm, I also served as the Corporate Communications Lead in our Emergency Operations Center, which is down in Joliet, which is basically the nerve center of all our dispatch operations and oversight in terms of managing the storm. So why don't you just give me the next slide, please? Oh, he's going to start it up. There we go. Okay, and I'll just take it through briefly. I believe you should have copies, and if you don't have copies, we will certainly have copies for you. There were two confirmed tornadoes that moved across northern Illinois. They are each rated as EF1. The tornadoes were confirmed in Downers Grove and Mount Prospect. You can see on here the path of Downers Grove tornado from the Weather Service approximately two miles, and Mount Prospect about 2.3 miles. Wind gusts of 81 miles an hour reported in Wheeling, Wheaton, Peru. Gusts of 75 miles an hour reported at O'Hare. Lightning strikes, tremendous amount of lightning. Approximately 11,000 lightning strokes were recorded within the ComEd service territory, just associated with the June 21st storm. Here's some additional detail that we provided from the National Weather Service regarding the path of the tornadoes that were confirmed in Downers Grove and Mount Prospect, and then some additional information regarding the damaging winds. I said winds gusts to 60, 80 miles an hour, per Tom Skilling's weather reports. The next chart really shows, it's a lightning stroke chart, and shows the frequency of lightning that occurred. The, actually, the magenta liner outline is really the ComEd service territory, so that indicates kind of the hard lines there in terms of where the lightning strokes are. Just to kind of put a frame of reference, the June 30th storm that took place, I believe there was about a little over 1,000 lightning strokes in that storm. Just kind of frame of reference, so it was like, you know, 10, 10 times the lightning strokes during this storm. ComEd serves 3.8 million customers across northern Illinois. This storm had a significant impact. Certainly was one of our larger storms, and a very difficult storm to manage in terms of the severity of the damage. It affected approximately 440,000 customers. Most of the customers within our northern region area. The west region had, actually had minimal impact, and I'll show you another slide emphasizing that. And the bottom line there, tree-related outages. Tree-related outages accounted for close to 50% of all customer outages. So this is broken limbs, branches, trees, coming down and taking down the wires. We had a rather significant crew presence in the field. Over 800 crews were used during restoration efforts, 440 ComEd crews. We also brought in crews from other states, about 160 contractor crews, 25 crews from our sister company out in Philadelphia, 220 tree trimming crews. And in terms of equipment damage, just some facts on here, we experienced about 79 downed poles, about 100 transformers needed replacement, and about 30 miles of wire and cable were used to repair lines. In terms of municipal outreach, I appreciate Jeff's comments regarding External Affairs contact with Wooddale. Certainly, External Affairs mobilized to contact communities. We also have our own command center that we opened, that's in Oak Brook Terrace in our Lincoln Center facility. We also have an electronic storm messaging system. We use that message, know as Send Word Now, really to give municipalities a heads-up regarding us opening our command center in the Joliet office, as well as to give some overall system conditions in terms of customers impacted and customers restored. We partnered with individuals in operations to conduct additional outreach to large customers and municipalities, and we also organized a series of conference calls for municipal officials. I believe we conducted four conference calls during the storm, and we put that out system-wide for municipalities to be able to dial in, get updates from ComEd leadership, both operations and external affairs, and the opportunity to ask questions regarding storm updates. Hardest-hit municipalities, I will tell you, these numbers, I still call them as a little bit preliminary, because we still go through a lot of data cleansing, but I think they're fairly accurate for day. If we have any updates, we'll certainly provide them to you, but you can see some of the towns here, we listed, I think, the top 12 here in terms of ranked by customer interruptions. Elmhurst was hit extremely hard with about 19,500 customer interruptions. You can see, that's really about, in terms of distinct customers, it's about 80% of the, 80% of the community was affected. Displayings was also hit very hard, Mount Prospect, Arlington Heights, as you can see, and then going down to number 12, Westchester. Significant amount of Westchester with about 6,700 customer interruptions out of 7,900 served. I'm going to go, I'm just going to pull a number from the back of the present- I'm going to go, I'm just going to pull a number from the back of the presentation in the city of Wooddale to kind of bring that closer to home. We serve 6,400 customers in Wooddale. And there were just a little over 1,000, 1,094 customer interruptions occurred in Wooddale due to the June 21st storm. Next slide here, I don't need to spend a lot of time on it, but it's really just kind of a graphical map showing the hardest-hit areas. I said the ComEd's Northern Region was the hardest-hit. I'm sorry, what's your question?
Can we go back one slide?
Sure.
Okay. And Elmhurst, why does it say customers served 18,000, but there were 19,5 interruptions? Were there multiple interruptions?
Great, great question, great question. The, there were multiple interruptions to similar customers. So if you see on the column, it says customers affected distinct. So 14,000 customers, distinct customers saw an outage. Of that 14,000, some of them saw a multiple outage. And that's how you get the 19,000.
Okay.
To address it. Good question. On, go to slide 11, the next slide. Oh, sorry, I'm sorry. You can see, this is really the outline of ComEd's service territory. And as I said, our far west area, of which I also manage, Rockford area and so forth, basically had very minimal impact from this storm. It was really centered in the upper parts of our Southern Territory and then going straight up into North Region. I remember seeing the radar scan of the weather moving through, and you could just see that direct path going through. And in terms of a regional aspect, this is one of our largest storms that we had to address from a particular regional aspect. Next slide. Let's see here. Go to slide 13, if you would, please. There should be a storm restoration process. Keep going forward. Forward. There we go. Just want to make a comment about a storm restoration process. There's lots of questions about how do you go about, and how does ComEd, you know, address a storm? And there's some guiding principles that certainly we as electric utility have for storm restoration. The first part in a storm, you know, their focus certainly is, you know, getting customers on as quickly as possible and as safely as possible. The safety of ComEd employees and our customers is always the most, is top priority. So the first step is really, is you look at your transmission lines and your substations because those are the major, major highways to get electricity into the neighborhoods and areas. So that's really through step one, is addressing any issues that occur on high voltage transmission lines and substations. Somewhat, I would say, in a parallel path is step two, is restoring power to critical facilities, critical to public health and safety. Hospitals, police and fire stations, water pumping stations, communication systems. You know, that's critical infrastructure, and we place a priority in getting those life safety accounts back in service. The next part is dispatching crews to make repairs to equipment that restore, store service the largest number of customers in the shortest amount of time. So these include what some people may refer to as trunk lines. We call them feeders. So those are the major feeder lines that come into a neighborhood and usually serve a large number of customers in restoring power to those feeders. And finally, you work yourself down to the smaller, what we call device or service outages, where now you're working on individual homes and services. So that's really the prioritization piece that we do in storm restoration. The last comment I just want to make is certainly is very important to us at ComEd that during a storm, that we have, you know, good communication with the municipalities. We think it's very important to understand what your critical needs are. And we want to really work, and as we go forward in the future, of shoring that up, understanding that better, and understanding if there's a major event in Wooddale, is what's critical to Wooddale and how can we assist in working that going forward? So those are certainly the discussions we want to have with individuals like Jeff and city staff and so forth as we go forward. That basically concludes the overall presentation, and I'll certainly entertain any questions that you have.
Thank you. Alderman Shaki, you were first.
It was about three years ago that we asked a ComEd representative to come in and talk to us. He gave us a presentation very much like this about one of the storms that had occurred before then. The difficulty is that we're not worried about the storm. We know you do a good job in the storms. What we're worried about is frequent outages in specific parts of Wooddale. Now, that representative told us, number one, that ComEd doesn't have any kind of a long-term plan on what they're going to replace. It's only when something breaks down that they go to it. We have a five-year plan on what we're going to be doing. He said ComEd doesn't have anything like that. What really got me, though, is that he promised us, he committed himself, to providing to the city a quarterly report on electrical outages in Wooddale by area. He said it's on the computer. It would be no problem to pull out and supply it to the city manager. I don't remember ever getting one of those reports after it was promised to us. So I'm just wondering, this is a nice dog and pony show, but it doesn't do us any good. What we're looking for is for replacement in certain areas that have frequent outages, even with minor rainstorms, not the big storm like this. We know what's going to happen with something like this. But we don't want the stuff going out routinely. And we asked for a quarterly report so that we could follow up, and hopefully ComEd could follow up, and do something about those specific areas. Can we get that quarterly report that was promised to us?
Let me address that directly. And Alderman, I certainly appreciate your comments and certainly apologize on behalf of ComEd if there was some commitments made that we did not follow through. That is certainly not something that we would be very proud of if we didn't follow through on that. We do have a rather robust proactive plan in terms of looking at systems, examining, inspection, and planning for the future. And in terms of, we have plans for capacity meetings such as load additions as we see low growth in area or projected low growth in area. We have to plan for that because construction takes time to do. So you do have to plan forward for capacity. We also look at reliability aspects, maintenance inspections. Maintenance inspections on a 34,000-volt system, 12,000-volt system, and so forth. So there is a proactive plan to looking at reliability. Now, we also certainly will have a reactive plan. If there are particular issues that you identify, we will be happy to take the addresses of the location, give us the information. You can give it to city staff, Bonita can get it. And we'll certainly review that and report back, work with city staff in terms of what our findings are, in terms of what the cause of outages are and so forth. So please provide that information to us, and we'll review it.
Alderman Shaki, follow up?
Yeah, we did provide that information to the previous person that was here.
Okay.
And he said he would give us that quarterly report of outages showing each area of the city. And that's what would tell us. We gave him a whole bunch of addresses. Nothing ever happened with that. And I don't think it's, it really isn't up to us to give you the addresses when you know, and you have it on your computers, according to this individual, where the outages occur, how often they occur. You can give us the report on it and then explain why nothing's been done on a certain area.
Okay.
Or why something has been done.
There's another piece, Alderman, that I'd be happy to provide to you. We have an annual report specifically for the, for Wooddale. And we can provide a copy of that annual report, and it has an outage history on that annual report. And we'll provide it to the city, and they can provide it to the Alderman. So I would suggest if, that we start at that point because it will actually show performance data for Wooddale. It will compare the performance data to the ComEd system, and we'll provide the report to the city. It's a start. Good.
Alderman Roy Wesley, you are next.
Thank you for coming. Because the last person we had, you weren't here. You weren't here for the last person, the last rep.
I appreciate, I appreciate that.
Which you were probably his boss at that time.
Actually, I was not. But that's neither here nor there. I certainly, it's regrettable that you did not get the information you asked for, but I was not.
Okay. I want to thank you for informing us in the last storm, and I hope the communication continues with the city, not like the last person we had. I, with this last storm where I live is a commercial street. I got a Taco Bell and a Marathon gas station. It took two days for it to get on. And I know it's busy and stuff, but isn't the idea for ComEd to get businesses on first and then work on residential areas? I know it's a hidden mis-question.
And you're referring to the storm of June 21st?
Correct.
Yeah.
I don't know what the procedure is.
No, well, actually, and somewhat, I touched on some of that. The, during the storm, and this starts getting into some of technical jargon. As I said, this was an unbelievably significant storm, particular for one region. I believe there was over 200 feeder lockouts just in North Region alone. One of the largest numbers that we've seen in just a region. And as I said, feeders are the, you know, one of the main trunk lines that come into, into the neighborhoods. In terms of our prioritization, the first priority that we go on is really somewhat of a dual path. And we look at transmission lines because that's bringing in significant amounts of power into cities, as well as substations. Because substations serve large areas. And during that storm, we did have issues with a substation, I know in particular, that we had to really focus on. We also had issues with life safety accounts, hospitals, nursing homes. And I was personally involved in restoration activities for those life safeties. So that's kind of where your top priorities are. Then the next piece you go to are those feeders. As I said, we had over 200 feeder lockouts within Northern Region. So your priority then is really focusing on those feeders. And that took a while to do. I mean, in terms of, in terms of getting things restored in two days, I really think that we were actually working on this storm. Probably, the storm came through on Tuesday night, and I think we were still working on this storm because of the significant amount of damage that occurred until Saturday morning, if I remember correctly. So, so the feeders are the next piece that go in. You know, whether they're in residential or commercial businesses, you might have mixed use on those feeders. But the feeders then kind of fall below, in a sense, that priority ranking of the transmission lines and life safety.
Okay.
Hello, go ahead.
Since the state raises the rates for ComEd for you, for upgrading the power and stuff, what are we going to see the difference? And the grids?
The, well...
You follow, you follow my question because ComEd just got a rate increase from the state?
Well, the rate, there's a couple pieces here. The rate case I believe that you may be referring to is actually, those are done actually for costs retroactively and for costs that were expended prior, prior. We go to a rate case to the Illinois Commerce Commission, put forth what work was done, what work was done in our service territory, and the costs associated with that. It's an open process. There's testimony, there's intervenors. And costs that are deemed as prudent, then those costs are allowed to be recovered from, you know, from basically the consumers. That's the rate case that we speak of. There is another particular issue that I would like to mention, I think is very, very important to the State of Illinois and residents and businesses of Illinois. And that's Senate Bill 1652.
That's the one I'm talking about.
Okay. Senate Bill 1652 was recently passed by both the House and the Senate. It's with the Senate President right now. So it, you know, should be going to the governor. Senate 1652 is, and I'll mention it briefly, is, I think is one of the most significant things that I've seen in my term at ComEd. And that has to do with really the modernization of the electric system. The electric system, we're very proud of the reliability record that we have throughout our service territory. But certainly, the system, the system is aging as every day goes by. And technology has increased at an unbelievably rapid rate. You know, you see people like myself walking around with iPads and smartphones and everything else. And the grid has not kept up with that particular pace. So there's a couple major issues with Senate 16, Senate Bill 1652. One of them has to do with really investment in infrastructure. And that involves replacement or injection of a large quantity of underground facilities, underground facilities that may be 40 years old, that we believe they're performing well now, but we're looking forward to the future, five years, 10 years from now. So there's a significant piece in terms of investment in the infrastructure, as well as the overhead system, treating, replacing overhead poles. There's also a modernization component, and I think it's very critical. Two pieces there that I think are very important. One is distribution automation on the system. What does that mean? I talked about feeders that lock out during a storm or during an outage. You can have a feeder lockout due to, you might have wildlife contact, you might have lightning contact, you might have a vehicle accident. Can cause a feeder to lock out. Distribution automation on the system will automatically sense that and transfer that load to another feeder. So you can automatically transfer then and pick up customers faster than you would be able to if you had to identify where the problem was, send a crew out, and the crew do manual switching in the field. That's one very important point. The next piece involves smart meters. The meters you have on your house right now does not have intelligence built into those meters. And there's approximately, somewhere probably in the order of 5 million meters on ComEd's system. The meters that would be part of Senate 16, Senate Bill 1652 are known as smart meters. It's a digital meter. A lot of advantages to it. Some of the main advantages is, one, if a customer's out of power, it sends a signal to the utility. We know who's out of power. It does not rely on customers having to call in to tell us they're out of power. So we get that signal. So we know when customer's out of power. Also, what it does is that that meter can provide information to consumers about how much energy they're using, the time of day they're using the energy, and can also be tied into estimating how much their bill is going to be and how much they can save if they take certain steps. There's a pilot program we have going on in the near west suburbs. About 130,000 of these smart meters are installed on a pilot program. This Senate bill would have these meters throughout the service territory. And I think that it's just a tremendous amount of benefits for consumers, businesses, and the utilities in terms of really bringing the grid up to levels of where technology has taken us today.
And one other piece I just want to quickly add to that. It will also really stimulate our economy.
The microphone, please.
One other portion that I just wanted to quickly add to that. It will provide a tremendous amount of stimulation to our economy because in order to get all this work done over the 10-year period that we've projected it to get done in, we would have to hire approximately upwards of 2,000 people. Lot of cable replacement, lot of pole replacement, lot of new meters to install. So that would put a lot of Illinoisans back to work.
Alderman Wesley, you had to follow up?
One more thing. We've also had a problem when we called ComEd for a repair of a light, burnt-out bulb or whatever. Doesn't seem like we could get it done in a timely fashion. Sometimes it takes, John, help me out here, months.
It's getting better.
So, thank you.
Is this in reference to streetlights?
Yes.
Okay.
So, I mean, I'd like to see if we could work out a little better on that. And there's some streetlights that just stay on. Yeah, the city's paying $40 a light, I think what it is. But I know ComEd does not throw money out the window. So I don't understand why those lights stay on. And we've, we've put in complaints about the lights staying on, and it still stays on. And I think, I think that you want to save the money, too.
No, you bring up an excellent point. And certainly, that's certainly tracked in terms of the streetlight repair. It's one of our key performance indicators, and we should be keeping up with that. Certainly, I think there's, you can call or fax the information in to get repaired. And certainly willing to work with Wooddale. If there's areas that need attention, we're certainly willing to work with them because that's a performance metric we need to stay up to date with.
Okay. And one more thing is with the storm, I was one of those 1,094 out of power. And I called, and like, six hours later, I still didn't get an update on when the power was going to be on. So maybe you could work on that a little better, too. Because before, you used to call, and it says an estimate time of when it's going to be on.
One of the things I would love to work... One of the things I would love to work with Jeff on is ensuring that you're on our Send Word Now Alert system. If you're on the Send Word Now Alert system, we can, we can definitely make sure in your official capacity that you are receiving those updates more timely. So, we'll, we'll work through that.
At my own house.
Okay.
I don't want to use personal with elected official.
Got it, okay.
Yeah, what Bonita was referring to is really a system that's designed for municipalities to give a, kind of an early warning or an update in terms of overall system and opening our, our command center. Certainly during the storm, are you referring to estimated, estimated restore times?
Correct.
And, and, and as I said, I, I was at our emergency operations center throughout the entire storm, working as an Joliet, and early on during a storm like this, it, it is, and it's, it's, it is difficult to predict, especially because, 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 you know, the storm came through, I believe around 8 o'clock at night, roughly around 8 o'clock at night. So, during the nighttime hours, you're, you're having a real hard time doing your damage assessment to figure out what's down, what's broken, and so forth. So, really, it's the next day is when you're really starting to get damage assessment out there in the field in daylight hours to see what's there. So, it, it's no excuse, but it is, it is difficult to get estimated restore times, and we actually some, in some cases, hold back the estimated restore times, because we don't want to give out erroneous information if we, if we don't really know. So, when you call in, we may say we don't know right at this point in time as to, you know, what the restore is going to be. I do know that in, early on in press releases, we had stated that, that we believed it was going to be a multiple day restoration effort just due to the sheer magnitude of tree damage that had occurred out, occurred out there. All that said, is estimated restore times is, is certainly an issue within our company that we always want to strive to do better because that's, that's a key issue with customers is the need for information, and, and the understanding is, is it going to be an extended outage? Because if it is, I'll make alternative plans, right? So, so I, I hear, I hear you loud and clear, and that is certainly an important issue within our company, continues to be worked.
Okay, thank you for coming.
Alderman Coles, you're next.
All right, I have just one thing to say. The storm was pretty bad, but you've had worse storms here in the city. I remember a couple years ago, we were out for, I was, my house was out for 27 hours, and then about a week later, it was out for 24. Everybody was out here for quite a while, and we all lived through it, we all bought generators, every generator, as long as the gas station could get a little gas to us, the generators, the home generators worked very fine, and since then, there's a lot of changes been done in Wood Dale because people got tired of having outages, and so they got, everybody's got a generator. I think there's at least five or six on this, on this board that has portable generators because of all the problems we've had with Commonwealth Edison. We're not given any time. 27 hours is a long time to be without electricity, and so it's 24. And let's see, I can tell you another story. Down the street from here, we have a pole that blew out two transformers in one day because they didn't put a heavy enough one in to take the load, and as soon as they hooked it up, the brand new one blew out because they didn't get a heavier one. And they were told to get a heavier one, and the guy says, "Oh, this one'll go," and he just shoved it up there, and it wasn't, 10 minutes later, it just blew, blew the thing out. Soon as it kicked out the fuse, it blew the transformer out. So, your men aren't perfect that are doing these jobs. I just want to let you know. That's my opinion. Thank you for coming. I'm not, I'm trying not to be not, not bad at, at you, but, you know, we all, we all have our faults, and there's people in this, in this town that every time a storm comes, they cross their fingers and go to a gas station, make sure they got about 10 gallons of gasoline in the garage waiting for the generators to be taken care of. That's all I got to say.
I, I appreciate your comments.
Alderman Shockey, if you could wrap this up.
I wanted to just echo what Alderman Wesley said. I should have thanked you for coming before I started jumping all over you. I do apologize for that. But I would, I would like to mention one other thing, and the State Senate Bill 1652, you mentioned about burying lines. One of the problems we have in Wood Dale is trying to beautify the city, and it's awfully difficult with those lines going all the way down Irving Park Road both ways, on both sides of the street. No matter what you do behind it, those lines are always visible, and I know it would be a lot of money, but I'm just wondering if you could maybe put Wood Dale on the list of those lines that might be buried in the future? And I thank you ahead of time.
No, I, I need, I appreciate your comments, and just probably need to clarify a piece, too. In terms of Senate Bill 1652, the underground I referred to was really replacement of, replacement or injection of existing aged underground facilities. It does, although we will be certainly hardening the overhead, it does not include a component of changing overhead to underground. Now, that is certainly always something that we are willing to work with municipalities on, if there's specific plans for that, well, certainly our engineering team will work with city and city staff, but they're, they're usually, unless it's a, a public improvement type of piece, whether it's road widening or something associated with that, there's usually charges associated with taking existing overhead and placing underground.
We'll try.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right, I'd like to thank you both for coming out, appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, pleasure meeting you.
Thank you. Mr. Manager, does that conclude your report?
It does.
Next item on the agenda is consent agenda. Do we have any object, objections to any of the items? First item on the agenda, on, on the consent agenda is subject to attorney review, just so we know. Do I, do I have a motion to accept items one, two, and three? Second? Do I have a second?
Thank you.
Second?
Any objections, corrections? Roll call.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Shockey?
Yes.
Alderman Aaron Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Lazaro?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, I'd like to make a motion to approve the three items. Senate, number one, sanitary sewer evaluation survey contract award to RJN Group for a not to exceed amount of $94,175,000, and again, subject to review of the attorney. Number two, 2012 alley replacement design work order to Baxter and Woodman for a lump sum of $47,000. Number three, pay request, number two, to A-Lamp Concrete Contractors Incorporated for Edison Road water main replacement for a not to exceed amount of $146,056.50. Do I have a motion? Second?
I'll second it.
Questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Shockey?
With reservation, yes.
Alderman Aaron Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Lazaro?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next is committee chairman reports, planning, zoning, and building. Alderman Winger?
Um, there is no report.
Next, public health and safety. Alderman Coles?
No report.
Next is public works, we have one item on the agenda. Alderman Woods?
Make a motion to approve an ordinance authorizing the sale of personal property owned by the city of Wood Dale.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Under question, Alderman Sizmarsky. Oh, I'm sorry. Any questions? Roll call.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Shockey?
Yes.
Alderman Aaron Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Lazaro?
Motion passes. Finance and Administration, Alderman Shockey?
Mr. Mayor, no report.
Next is other business, I think Mr. Wesley has something, go ahead.
Yes. I just want to make a statement on the appointment of the pension board that, I don't know if everyone's aware of it, but the pension board does not have a single, single resident from Wood Dale on this pension board, even though it's, is, there's managers watching the money and stuff, but it is a $15 million fund, and I think it's kind of important that the residents of Wood Dale would have some representation on this board, and I find it kind of disappointing that, that the, that we don't have any residents on this board.
Thank you. Anybody else? Next item is approval of list of bills, July 7th. Alderman Shockey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We can refer to the bills on page 17, the Radio Disney Chicago. Would you like to explain, Mr. Manager?
Mr. Manager?
Sure, thank you, Alderman Shockey. Actually, yes, the list of bills was already printed up before we actually got an additional sponsorship, third-party sponsor to cover that bill for Radio Disney's performance at Prairie Fest, so the list of bills should be $3,000 less than what it is, so the total list of bills is $783,633.44. 603, my mistake, and 44 cents. Additionally, we sponsorship levels for Prairie Fest this year, last year we're 36, this year we're up to pushing 50, so we're doing quite well this year.
And on page 19, I did indicate ahead of time to inquire about the Chem, Chemin nurseries, the total of $4,162 that we've spent, a lot of it is various plantings. I haven't seen that much, except we put too much in the clock tower, and you can't, the lights don't even work. Just like to get an idea of where these plantings and where these bark and mulch and everything are going.
Mr. Kramer?
Thank you. This list of bills covers the spring month, so basically the mulch is all for various areas around town, the clock garden, shorties, I know we dropped some mulch off at Christie's, not sure if that's part of it or Christie's triangle. A lot of it is for the work done on the train station. As you know, we did a lot of rehab work to the lights that were installed on the platform that Metro went through when they installed the new platform lights, so we had to come back and reestablish that. I know I spoke with Mr. Wilson earlier, and he had figured out that some $1,300 of that was for that project, and then I know we had done some additional work that Alderman Wesley had requested that we do in-house at the North Waste Water Treatment Plant, I know that's included on there. As far as itemizing it out, I'm sure I could go back and do that if that's something you wanted us to look into.
No, I just want to make sure that you've got a good handle on what is going out there, and is, to be honest, I don't use that nursery very much because they're so expensive. I'm just wondering if there's other sources that we could be using that might be a little bit less.
Mr. Kramer?
Well, it is a wholesale nursery, traditionally not open to the public. We get fairly good pricing from them, we've called around to other nurseries, there are other nurseries that are cheaper, but unfortunately, they're an hour or an hour and a half away. We did contact Hinsdale Nurseries, which is down in Plainfield, Bowling Brook, and got some similar prices on some of the varieties we put in at the train station, and the pricing was pretty flat, it was about the same. So, for me to pay somebody to drive down there really isn't worth it. They are close, traditionally why we go to them. We could get mulch sometimes cheaper from somewhere else, but again, they do offer us the ability to go down there, pick it up, it is relatively close. When you start getting it delivered, you then have to pay the delivery charge of it being brought out. We can definitely look at some other areas when we have larger projects. Unfortunately, I was kind of surprised we had all this lumped together on one bill as well. Again, we normally do our spring plantings and things like that, unfortunately, the train station kind of added a big lump sum into there, so.
All right, that, that answers my question, thank you. So, I would like to make a motion then to approve the list of bills, and I'll read them off, the general fund, $260,962.72, road and bridge fund, $2,843.96, motor fuel tax fund, $5,292.28, tourism fund, $8,883.8, narcotics fund, $600, capital projects fund, $38,347.64, computer parking lot fund, $3,016.32, the water and sewer capital projects, $320,682.51, the water and sewer fund, $142,954.94, and the grants fund, $19.99, for a total of 7, 783,603.44.
That is your motion?
Yes.
Do I have a second? Roll call, please. Oh, under question, sorry. Roll call.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Lazaro?
Yes.
Alderman Shockey?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Motion passes. Tonight, we have no items to be referred, no items from information, excuse me, I'm sorry, having a bad day tonight. We do need executive session on regards to review executive session, official minutes, and personnel. We are going to adjourn, do I have a motion? Do I have a second? Roll call, please. Roll call? Sorry.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Lazaro?
Yes.
Alderman Shockey?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
That passes.